I don't have my gavel. Let's call it order and. I think the first thing is we should take attendance and then we'll go on to chairman's comments and all the business.
Mark Chiaconia.
President.
Larry Verlet.
Here.
Barbara Senneloff.
Here.
Nick Webb.
Here.
Kristen Waterbury.
Here.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Joan Ulate.
Yeah.
Alright, great. So in terms of chairperson's comments. Would love to welcome Kristen and actually kind of Barbara too, you know, you're a new member and it's great to have you guys on board. So, welcome. We're hoping to do good things. We actually have done some good things between. The pollinator pathway, the food waste recycling. Land acquisition, which you'll hear about later on today. And you know, we're looking for new ideas, fresh ideas, and so your contributions will be excellent to have on board. You know, I've got a lot of grizzled veterans here. And Joe.
I'm the costume.
But you know, it's one of those things where this, this can be an impactful committee if you sort of are commissioned. If you expand the boundaries of what really we're supposed to be doing. And I'm all about that. So. With that said, we'll hear later on today about where we are with the land acquisition. Larry, I know we've got a subcommittee meeting next Monday. But there's been a lot of developments over the last couple of days, so we'll fill everybody in on that. There was the P O C D. Which is Planet Conservation and Development Workshop last night. I think Abby is going to come here and fill us in on that, which is great. You know, MJ and we were both there. So. We can chip in or chirp in depending. So that's all I've got for my comments tonight. So, old business. Oh. Keep me honest. So we didn't have a meeting last month, so we had to approve minutes over a month prior. And obviously only the people that attended that meeting can vote on that. But. I know that voice circulated the minutes from the meeting two months ago. Does anybody have any comments or issues with it? Pretty clear if I told them. Alright, then what I will do. If somebody. Oh my goodness, here she is. Hey, can somebody make a.
I'll make a motion that we.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. So Larry was the motioner and MJ was the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Maybe the minutes are approved. Okay, I need my glasses here. This is crazy. So old business, residential food composting. I'm going to turn it over to MK who've been blinding that. I think the next step is the schools. I think that is the low hanging fruit, so.
Abby and I had a conversation last night about that and. She suggested that I have Sam King, who's I've been dealing with. Contact her directly and Sam would like to do. A presentation about how. The school program. Food scrap recycling is different from their other residential ending.
Okay, alright. And is this Blue Earth or is this?
Blue Earth, yeah.
Okay. And Sam's Blue Earth?
Sam King, Blue Earth, yeah.
Okay. And this presentation, would that be to this group or would it be somebody else?
No, he said he would like to do it during the business day.
Okay.
And obviously Abby was like that this was not. And since I'm retired, I, I would love to attend.
Yeah.
So.
And as I was, I retired, I.
Yeah, so.
I will tell anybody else. I mean, I know Larry's fully.
McConnell, you know, I'll give his methods. We'll see how long it takes for that to happen. But yeah, I would love to.
So if you think about it, when I started exploring the grants on food recycling in schools. Kind of had to have your ducks in a row. So this is a good first step. Because you gotta have school on board, you gotta have town on board, you gotta have us on board. And then you can actually get the grant and then do all that stuff. So, so that's what the word idea.
The one thing about this and Abby maybe can confirm. It doesn't seem like. The number of users at the transfer station has increased with the food scrap recycling program. It's still the same five hundred or so people. Yep, so. Obviously, like I'm one of those who really just comes to drop off food scraps.
Right.
Sometimes I have leaf, you know, lawn clippings or whatever, but. I guess I would love to see that number go up.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, it feels like the transfer station to PR. Because people don't know if you can get this unbelievably good in March.
Yes.
I was talking to somebody the other day and they were like, it's free. So yeah, it's free. And it's great.
Yes.
And actually, since the food waste recycling. There are no longer the mudworks because the temperature is getting up to a level where it kills mudwork and stuff. So yeah, it is very. So you know, not only that, but the wood chips as well. I can't guarantee the wood chips are.
Weed free.
Weed free. As a matter of fact, I could guarantee they're not being free. But it seems like compost really is.
Yes.
So.
Once we get the textile recycling bin up and running, you know, there's another bush, just sort of stuff. Look at everything you can do here folks.
Right, right. Maybe we make another adjunct library there.
Right. Copy sharp is debatable, but.
As noticeable when we would go there, because I go there enough for. Leaves and a few other things. And I mean, I know where the mulch pile is, but it's not very well defined.
That's a great point.
And also maybe just improving signage.
I've said, you know, you said that, that's exactly what.
I didn't even know that you could bring food scraps, so. Maybe there's just a way to.
Yeah.
You know, what we did. We've been at the transfer station handing out flyers and I still have flyers left. And we've been at the library handing out flyers, letting people know and. But. I don't know. Maybe some other.
I know.
Reaching out to Harvard News again. I don't know. I find out like what other towns are doing like.
Well, honestly, they're failing.
Yes, yes.
Our food waste, at least our food waste is still continuing. Did I hear Madison's one, by the way, so I'm.
Yeah, but I think, you know, we're asking folks to do something extra by the time, or something extra feels like too much. I think that's part of it. So, you know, and I know that there were conversations before I got here about herb side, other pieces, even that. It's hard for some folks. So I think it's a matter of maybe there's a target. That we want to reach out to and market this to or try to focus a little bit. And you know, it's too general. I don't know how much traction we're going to get, but if it's something that's like, look, we're going to, you know. We're going to go into the high school and we're going to see if we can give, you know, sell the kids on dragging their parents.
That, that would be a good thing. I think they're, they're all into it, so.
Yeah, maybe they have a newsletter, the Clinton Public Schools, maybe get something in the newsletter about the program. And directing people to the website.
Does the high school have an environmental?
They do, they do. And they have done their, they have done their own. Composting thing in a, in a small way, but. And we've tried to get students to keep on the Conservation Commission. But you know, most of the students who want to do something like this are already the students that are doing too much. And so. What's kind of the first thing that goes is the Conservation Commission meeting. So.
Yeah, generally we end up, and it's a huge mistake to take juniors because their junior year.
Right.
When they hit. And then fall semester of their senior year, ridiculous. Because they're applying for college and doing a college visit, so. You're right.
Do people have any, even I don't know, these tipping fees. I mean, this is the reason that this was all started, right? Because. Abby can tell you, we. This one incinerator just closed, just closed. And so like. Thirty towns, of which ours was one, had to find somewhere else to take their trash. And so of course places that are left are charging more and more. They call these tipping fees. Because landfills are filling up.
Right.
So everything you can do.
It's worse than that because you've got the ultimate estate, so.
Right.
You know, now you're taking these, these incredibly heavy. Such a thing. I mean, you know, if you go back to, I remember when we were starting on this. Food waste is thirty-three percent or thirty percent of the weight of your trash, believe it or not. It's just super heavy. And if you can take that out of the waste stream, it's really terrific. So, and it's impactful. And you're right, maybe it's something where we could talk to Eric and say, hey. Let's talk about the whole history of what went on there. What we're doing about it and make a real point for getting people through the transfer station act. Honestly, I think the five hundred people that go there regularly are our best audience. Because they're going there already.
Yes.
Just although. As you know, there's a lot of.
Yes, yes. And there's a lot of people that you, which you know. People say was, oh, I already compost.
Right, and that's great.
Yes, great. That you're keeping trash, you're keeping food waste out. And I'll say, do you have? Bones? Do you, you know, chicken bones or whatever? We take chicken bones. Steak bones, you know. Shells from shrimp, you know, all of that. And those people don't do that in their compost.
Right. Right now, we, we are getting the schools to do it, right?
No, 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 we're.
That's, that's.
Biggest source. They are a big.
They are our biggest source and that's kind of step two.
Alright, step two. And then how about the restroom?
Well, yeah, that's the step three is like, okay. Can we offer something to the restaurants? Because they're paying for carting fees for their weight. Is there a way that they could be incented?
Yeah. Yeah, because it sounds like picking up on Abby's comment about the fact that we're asking people to do something more.
Right, right.
On how do you incentivize that? And it sounds like maybe we should have both a municipal and even a state incentive.
Yeah.
Everything comes down to money or, or something. Some type of tax break or advantage. I don't know if there is any statewide initiative. To seek some type of incentive system.
There are some grants available.
There are. And we were just too late to start on schools. But Larry, to your point, I think the. The quick pro quo of getting to the transfer station. Is, oh my gosh, you got this great mulch sitting right there. And it is bad. And people are paying a lot of money to buy dirt from, you know, or topsoil or whatever in the bags. You just go get it. I mean, I mean, I bring these big buckets and.
Yeah.
So I think that's the, hey, did you know you can drop off your food waste and then go get the results of that food waste that we compost on? And I agree. Barbara, with your comment about signage, because there is no signage within that thing. And. It is sort of like a transfer station that operates in the nineteen fifties in that.
Exhibiting, if you don't know where you're going, your first time there, you might just want out.
Yeah, although the nice people there, I mean, they're so nice, but you're right.
But if you don't know, it's like, what am I doing?
So I think you're right. You know, let's, let's take that away and let's see if we can come up with signs that sort of alert that there's a compost. Even at the, you know, sort of where it goes up the hill to the. You know, the, the leaf pile of sticks. Just having something that says, you know, leaf pile this way, sticks this way. Compost pickup this way. Yeah, it just begins to make it a little more human and. So yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Simon Adams.
That's a great idea. Alright, let me take that away and see how we can affect that. I'll plug to. I mean, Todd will say if you bring him more, I'm sure. So then we got to figure, we've got money, we can do it, we'll just do it. Okay. Great report. Thank you. Oh, a school. So where are we with schools?
So. I emailed Sam, told him to contact Abby directly.
Okay.
And so I'm sure he'll do that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'm sure he will.
Yeah.
Okay. And then any support we can lend to that as well. I would love to be there.
Sure, yeah.
Alright, and then. Sustainability is not here, so let's. Handle that unless anybody's done any work with sustainability committee.
Well, I just joined the sustainability committee. Yeah, okay, like you kind of be helping both.
The liaison.
Yeah, I guess so. Um, it was just Brett, Sue and I the other night. And we started talking about the textile recycling program, which we were waiting to find out.
To do education on that as well. So.
Yeah, so that was great. And we talked about the food composting too, so they're on board. And Brad was trying to figure out like how to get into this school too. I don't know if he talked to you.
He has, in the past, I know there's been some, he's gone to the schools and has meetings, but one of them is. Yeah, I think by this point it's, we really want to sort of provide and say, this is the strategy we're going to take and then coordinate. So it's not, because they, they start hearing a name for positive.
Right, right. And everybody has a different note. Yeah. So MJ, actually, can you make that appointment, just to reach out to Brett?
Sure.
Like that, so that we're at least not going.
Yeah, they're also talking about like figuring out our ways of communication between everybody too. So I don't know, that's on there, some things to do.
Right, okay. Cool, okay. Any other old business that we should cover? No? Okay. Moving on to new business, update on the plan of conservation and development. I think that's really gonna, you know, MJ and I can cover it.
I talked about it so much. Yeah, sure. It's here, it's up. If you head on to the town planning department website, at the top of our, left-hand half of our page. There's a link to the plan and when you click on it, you can get the plan, all the appendices. And there's comment box. It's an open-ended comment box and we're looking for your feedback now. Are there conservation open space, natural resource management things that we have missed that we need to better describe? We're asking folks to recognize that individual, very specific projects are broadly not covered by themselves, right? This is the big picture. And what we're trying to do is make sure that what is in the plan will support the kinds of ideas that we have. So we may not say. Put a trail right here, acquire this particular property. We're going to say, refer back to the open space planning and conservation mission priorities. Make sure that you have the broad goals of connecting resources, getting people access to water, all that kind of. So think about, if you have a particular idea, people is in there, think about how it might fit into one of those goals. So it's, it's broken up. As many plans are. There's sort of a little history section, the about Clinton, all the demographic stuff. You know, all those, you know, percent open space and all that kind of thing. And then it gets into our vision and then. A little bit differently from some plans, it sort of focuses almost entirely on some of the goal of the strategies. And so there's broad topic areas and underneath each those, there are ways that we can advance them. And I think. It was done intentionally, we sort of cut the number of those strategies in half in the last plan, so it's not super overwhelming. We want this to be a general and working document. A lot of the data, the analysis, the things that we did in the background are going to be appendices. So if folks really, you know, really want to dive into. You know, the history of the percent of open space or whatever it is, go into those dependencies and all of the presentations that our committee did. A long way to get there, all due to the consultants' status in that space. And then we also are developing our big implementation table, which you will all feature in. Especially for things like specifically updating the open space mapping and planning. And it's, you know, it's time to kind of go back through that. And then if there's other initiatives, we do invasives in there, you know, that'll hopefully come here for action. So that kind of thing is gonna, is gonna keep. If folks have questions, if you're reading it, you're like, wait, I'm either not seeing this or, you know, tell me what you meant by export. We have until September twenty-fourth to get some comments in. So it's a short turnaround. And the reason for that. Is we've got to at some point get a draft together that folks are comfortable with, so we can lock the plan. And so we're aiming for the planning and zoning commission's October sixth meeting. To, when we say lock, we sort of say, okay, we've decided as a community, this plan is ready to go to upstate. For concurrent and state planning and to the regional council departments to make sure that we are in line with the statute, except in all policies. So when that happens, we can still be accepting comments, but we will be tweaking the plan. We'll get all the comments back to the end. And so we're just trying to make sure the draft goes to the reflects where everybody.
So just as a follow-on to what Abby said, it's ten years. So what we're saying now is going to be with us for ten years. So it's well worth our time to go through it. The other thing is, if you put it in the lens. And just because we wrote that grant for the land acquisition this year. And there's another couple that we've done. If it's not part. If the land acquisition is not part. Of the ten-year POS, PCOD. Then that doesn't help. Because when you write the grants, you actually have to refer back to the, you know, strategy of conservation and development. So. Put that lens on it as well. So for example, as you know, I've been beating the cleanliness of the marina. Horse, just because. We had somebody come in here and he was talking about how the beaches are B minus versus ten, tenacity is A.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, so our beaches are not as clean. And obviously that's because you've got the rivers coming in, but it's also all the boat traffic and the marinas. So. I have submitted a couple of times that, hey. There should be somebody that worries about best practices of marine cleanliness and we should have increased water testing and. You know, and I'm going to put that in again as another comment, because it's something that we can refer back to. When we want to do increased water testing and, you know, tell Harvard Master for instance, that he's got to go through education that all these. Local mariners in terms of best practices. Just because it's one of those things where if we can just make it. Turn the dial just a little bit on cleanliness, you know, maybe we can get it from a B minus to a B plus. I mean, I always told my son, that's what you got it in for. Now, my daughter, of course, anything less than eight.
Let me go with your comment for a second. Sure. And I think that's great, making sure our mariners, which is a good portion of the town's assets. Are comporting and complying with best practices to minimize environmental impact. I agree with that. Now, here's the question. Is there a document out there setting forth the best practices? And number two.
So Larry, it's ten years. So whether or not there is. There will be more and more best practices that we have to bring in today.
Okay, yeah.
In the existing POS.
It's not the existing. It wasn't featured in the previous harbor management plan. I think there's more language around this in the upcoming harbor management plan that we're just hoping to hear how the state law has documented. The P S P references back to harbor management. But I don't think there's language specific to marine management in the POS. So we want that in here now.
Yeah, so I would again add that in as a time. So there's things that like that, when you read through. And it's not hard to read through. It's, I don't know, what, fifteen pages?
It's not, yeah.
And there's a lot of pictures and, you know, so you can get through it relatively quickly. And again, because this is a ten-year impact, well worth our time to do it.
And along with that, if you end up making that path, like in the water. By there, but one thing is the detail is not very broad, but. I really notice a strong patsy smell when the paint on the boat's down there all the time. That's full of y'all name. Because they use the, they're really strong paint. When they do that, come on down.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things. And look, you know, they're an important element of our. But there are ways. That they can, and I'm sure that they've never been challenged.
Yeah.
And what I would say is to ensure the credibility of our organization in relation to what we're asking. I'm assuming there's got to be some science out there, i.e. testing, which shows a relationship for between they to comply with best practices and work well. In other words, because if there aren't, if there is no relationship, then you face the pushback. Well. There's no direct relationship between one and the other. So why should we conform with best practices to be more cost-effective?
Right.
And it's what are we trying to take out of the water, right? So we haven't pumped out the, our folks taking full advantage of it, right? We know that we have. Sort of nitrates and other, you know, epholite and certain. You know, pathogens and other things that are likely to cause some of these failures. So we don't, are we talking metals? Are we talking organics? Are we talking, right? And what are we aiming for? You know, some, some of it's going to be a subjective system issue.
Where do they pump them?
They, they get to a tent on the pump out, but I guess disposed.
But maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not saying this isn't a problem with marina, but from what I. Have been led to understand, a lot of the problem is. Pesticide runoff from the.
So that is, that they deal with in the ten-year plan.
They do, okay.
So I was glad to see that and I thought that was really important as well.
Deal with in terms of regulations, so.
The plan, you have the regulation, it sort of says you need to be focusing on this and it's going to take a combination of regulation, outreach, education and all of those things. Best practice management, town resources, all of that. And then that kind of opens up to say, okay, we're doing these things, right? And that can be anything from stuff under or as form, municipal separate program sort. Programs, low impact development, regulations, you know, our next step after this is to overhaul the zoning regulations as well as subdivision and I W C stuff. And so as we do this, we can elevate what we're doing. Right now, we don't codify some of the things from our quality manual for smaller sites. We could do that. And there are things we can do in terms of site design. For not a lot of extra expense, probably ultimately less maintenance for some of the landscape elements if you're not. You know, hydrant and accelerators and chambers and all that kind of stuff. That's a little bit, you know, more involved for bigger sites, but on these smaller sites, we can persuade us. We can do, you know, there's things we can do to really disconnect and.
Yeah, I mean, I know inland has rigs, so people who live on waterways, people who are on there. You know, we have a mechanism if they.
Sure. But for ponds in coastal areas where there aren't inland waters, but there are tidal waters. In the mountains, true. And so, you know, that kind of thing, or how we manage the waterways, a lot of stuff.
Right, sure.
And you know, it's one of those things where I want to talk to a couple of the, you know, the chemical companies and talk about, I mean. Literally every single house except for mine. At the sign that they had got. This past week, and I was like, oh my God, if. Depending on what that is, that is a significant input into the. Yeah, into our, our, and you know, my community, there's. Yeah, into our our and, you know, my community, there's deeply about the water quality. So if that turns out to be not good for the water quality, I bet you I can turn the whole neighborhood to piss.
There's some, there's some really good resources, the Eastern Dental Conservation District and National Water Protection Association. We've gotten a grant weeks ago to do some education outreach stuff and there's, so there's some stuff out there that I think. Like the Massachusetts Stormwater Collaborative, there's some really good groups to to pull stuff from. So I think we have, you know, once, once we get through the planning phase of this, I think it's a really awesome opportunity for somebody to say, I'm gonna get small.
Yeah, anyway, I mean, that that was like a miniscule piece, but that was my sort of like. My stepping on a soapbox. So read the plan. It'll cause you to have thought, because I, it was funny, it was actually the section that talked about educating the residents about their lawn care. Um, because that that had real impacts in the uh, in the harbor. I was like, well, what if that don't want any, and yeah. So it's like, as you read through this plan, thing, things will come up, you'll think about that. So again, it's just a high recommend and don't be afraid to submit a comment.
Okay, and in follow up to that, again, it's not just the mariners with regard to affecting water quality. It's everybody with lawns, which begs the question, uh, the water drains off the lawns onto the roads. Now, we have drainage from storm sewers and and we have talked about this issue before. Where you have the drainage come out, you have like a green swam that absorbs as opposed to just going straight out directly. Into our rivers, streams and ultimately the long home sound. And is there something of that provided for in there? Structure we provide for this.
It's enabled, it's not specifically said you shall design green streets or or incorporate L I D into your swamp system. Because it won't work everywhere. We're gonna have places where we can't do that, where the leg is directly in the pavement or, you know, roads. We, you know, we'd be better off. Uh, in a certain area focusing on, you know, storm flaps that will flow and sort of ties because it's actually flooding the surcharge of the roads. Pulling all that stuff back in on a Sunday day flooding issue.
It increases maintenance costs too, obviously, so systems.
And and you can do sort of a pavement disconnect thing, I mean, we're we're, you know, in Massachusetts, we did a whole analysis. To the neighborhood for our code and we went house to house instead of, hey, you know, how we did, how we do with the residential piece? And then how do we deal with the excess pavement, right? Can we pick up, do a little mini catchments of where the water is flowing? And pick up mini pieces, so we're treating along the way, we're not trying to just do it yet. Uh, so there's lots, there's lots and lots of ways to do it and, you know, having it in here will help us with grants to go there, so.
It should also help our inland weapons to be more effective filters of the water going into the center.
And can I add the dark skies into this as well, when everybody put a line, you know, with, you know. We sort of solve the residential dark skies, please. But think about it from a government, commercial point of view as well.
First one I built in Clinton, we've found that we have a house and the whole side door. And so it's a big deal about all the oysters were all dying. This was in two thousand seven. And we directly, it was a possible relationship with the pesticide usage. And I used to walk around yards and telling my neighbors, have you not looked at because it's going into the storm drains? And it's why it went to all that sound, that was right. And they really, they listen, wasn't able to.
Yeah, it's a free rider concept. You don't have to pay, you you're not gonna pay for more expensive stuff, you'll just get the.
Yeah, right. Not to say, or even your fiance's spent to it.
I don't know if it is or not, I mean, that's things like, before I open my mouth.
But I was thinking maybe you can use the oysters too to justify.
Sure.
And like, what's the status now? Clint used to be a huge oyster.
Well, they're, they are coming back.
They are.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, they dropped a ton of oysters just on the other side of our beach.
You mean the town beach?
No, no, uh, my residential beach, but it's across the way from the town beach and. Sort of go around the point and then you're heading towards Madison and they now have oyster beds there.
Oh.
So at least started. And oysters are great. I mean, the more oysters we can get in there, the better.
Yeah.
So and and by the way, this society doesn't affect Clint because we don't border on Connecticut River. But if anyone has noticed those recent articles about how all of the uh, cities and towns upriver. In Massachusetts are dumping, uh, every time there's water, excess water flows. They're dumping millions of gallons of sewage directly into the Connecticut River, which comes now down. I, if I was any city on Connecticut River. Um, I would definitely want to put pressure on our our state's attorney to start a suit against Massachusetts. And uh, it, I don't think Vermont, New Hampshire, to the extent that the Connecticut River flows through those states. Um, is, it has been reported as doing that, but Massachusetts definitely. And um, we really need to do something in that regard.
I saw that news like a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Anyway, the point is, read the P O C D and uh, don't be afraid to make comments. And when you make a comment, don't be afraid to list that you're on the conservation commission. So again, think about it from water, from food waste recycling, all the stuff for uh, invasives, which we work on. Um, by the way, I've got a great idea on invasive, so I've been reading about the uh. You know, the swatings that form of both volunteers that go out and clean up the knotweed, some of these other invasives. Uh, for a ten. I'm thinking that maybe that's something we could set up, but anyway, just.
Something on that too.
Okay, cool. Uh, but anyway, it's one of those things where read through there with that that eye of what we do. And then make comments, because that's what it's there for. Okay, that good, Adam? Okay, excellent. Uh, correspondence, I understand that. Wow, I didn't bring my glasses.
Remember Diana. Uh, from the Boulder Lake Pass district. And made a great presentation and um, so now they're contacting us. It says we are specifically writing right now for two reasons. One, to see if it is possible to set up a local reporting system for invasive plants and insects. Found in the Clinton area and two, to see if there are any proactive ways for us to protect the weapons. So uh, she mentions purple loose string.
Okay.
Am I saying that? Okay. And she mentions, she guys still grass, Japanese still grass, yeah. Spotted lanternflies, emerald ashcore. Japanese knotweed and Asian longhorn beetles. So, um.
Okay.
A local reporting system, you know, and I said to, I asked Lori, what, what about a, just a thing that says. Invasive reporting at Clinton C T dot org and she said, okay, but who's gonna manage?
Yeah, that's good.
It's like, yeah.
There are some tools out there.
Okay.
But it would cost us money, so we would have to budget with us.
Okay.
Uh, I can work with our G I S consultant. It's useful to keep it in for it, but it's more useful than that with the books.
Yeah.
And so every species or thing that we're tracking and assemble and folks are able to go on, okay, I saw it here, I saw it here, I saw it here. The scope of the problem becomes more significant, right? And people start to connect a little bit. Um, there are plenty of mapping tools or inputs that we can put into our G I S system and create like a little app. Down there on the invasion page, all that stuff. But I would need to get a quote, but we can be as funny.
Sure.
But it'd be great, I think, for our office.
Yeah, just have a layer that put on the map.
Yeah, and and it's, I think we would do it as a separate kind of app, because I think the um. The reality is that updating the layers for like the official G I S map, where it's kind of static thing and it gets done in certain intervals and. Cause of, you know, or whatever, but we wanted to be interactive for residents to be able to say, look, I found this. So like, check out this cluster in our neighborhood, uh, of all of this stuff that we need to take a look at and maybe it'll come to the neighborhood. And then get together and do something about it where, you know.
Are you saying get a quote uh, for a system that will allow us to report all the areas of town?
And the second somebody puts it in, it pops up in the map. So all we would do in our office is kind of oversee and manage and somebody says, hey, somebody were related or were coming or this is the wrong thing, whatever it is.
I can make a suggestion that would be probably cost free and then I started like with the tree of heaven is the Google Maps. And everyone, a lot of people use Google, so you can just go in there and just hit it in there in your neighborhood of anything, basically.
How do you share it so that?
I would have to figure that out, yeah, I might, yeah, I've been working on a little bit, but it seems fairly straightforward and a lot of people, you use Google Maps already, so.
Right, right.
In print, I have marching. Yeah, I have suggested add it though for the whole, uh, the whole town to report through centralized system. And the reason would be to our advantage, we can also indicate to the extent that, or it'll cost us somewhat for the input, right? Uh, the initial program and then the input, but once we do that, um, we have noticed the land trust. That there are a lot of grant opportunities having to do with the cleanup of invasive species.
Sure.
So if we have the documentation, it gives us a step up and moving quickly to get that grant money for the cleanup. So it would be a tool for further future grant application.
And we did, yeah, we did something with the the coastal resiliency plan where there was a map for comments as part of that. And so folks could put their comments in all over town, that could also upload pictures. And we can do something where there's a reporting piece, but there's also a remediation piece, right? So if somebody's gone in to do removal, then we could, we could say, okay, it was, it was reported here and it was removed here. Or it was, you know, if we can have a monitoring mechanism in this thing, we can, we can make it pretty cool as time goes on. So we just have, what do we want to do essentially?
So, so before we incur the cost as a town by having C C recommend that we do this as one of our projects. The question becomes, does the state either D E P for the invasive plants? Or the the health, the health department in terms of um, invasive um, mosquitoes and bugs and things of that nature? Do they have a reporting system?
Well, maybe for the insects, the Connecticut Agricultural Survey Station. They all might have software that we can.
Well, right, but if they already have something up, then why should we incur the expense? We can report it to the state, either one for invasive plants or invasive um, um, mosquitoes or um, ticks. Yeah, and uh, and then they'll have it compiled by the state and anytime we move for a grant, we just pull that information back from the state.
Right, yeah, no, that's great. I I think there might be some state. I mean, it is, invasives are taking on a life, they're not only on the land, but also in the water. But yeah, no, I think that's a great idea there. I'll look into it and sure we will as well, but um.
And then a quick idea, you know, the South Clinton Post website, people are really good about putting in like everything in there. The one I found in South, it's a website that for people that really plant here.
This is next door that.
Next door.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, next door, okay.
But it's a box.
Right, 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 right.
Kinds of things that are happening.
So we use Nextdoor and actually see Seth Clinton or his button in general, just as a way to get out the word of things that would. Probably not jab bees, not knotweed and stuff, but you're right, I mean, we could possibly use.
And report there.
Yes, they had a great system.
But then again, somebody would need to be in charge of looking at all of those, yeah.
But it was interesting, so in Halloween, Nextdoor. At least for Seth Clinton, if you said you were going to be providing candy, et cetera. Uh, you could report that to Nextdoor and then they had a map of Clinton with all the people they've had. And, you know, and it wasn't clean, because. What? Yeah, but anyway, I I mean, there's, so it's worth exploring some of these ideas and and why don't we take that away? I think it's a great idea that they wrote in. Let's take it away and talk.
Do we wanna have a report back on our agenda?
Yeah.
And or should we look into the cost of.
Right, right. So that'll keep us honest for next month.
And maybe just send a one sentence letter to tell anyone we're looking into it.
Yeah.
And get back to.
Yeah. I'll do that, once I get my glasses, read this.
We have to be careful not to give too much to Abby, if she won't come to our meeting.
Yeah, I know, right? No, no, I'll, I'll look on the B E E website and some of these others that um, are focused on that. The other place is Yukon's and uh. Yukon uh, agricultural department is very big into this. So, you know, and and I'll talk to some of my master garden friends. I have those.
This might be a good pro, um, raising the profile of the conservation mission. If we get into the project of reporting invasive uh, plants or insects. Uh, especially given the big rise in interest of the diseases now.
Yeah.
So we're doing something by checking to see if we have the reporting sites of the state and if not, should we incur the cost of a local.
Should we buy plenty of possums that we can spread out? Because those are just faggots if you're taking out the. Oh no, they're the sweetest things. How can you, what? Oh my God, you see my pump? Got the same type.
Something that works with sustainable all mandate pit too, right? And I started working on that. Um, took that on the the act for the invasive species, so it's a three point one oh and you have to go there and make sure your town is complying. And so I've been going through documents and saving everything so I can give that to the state and then we get, what is it like, we're working towards.
Almost points, yeah.
Yeah.
Silver. We're not ready for gold. Silver is.
Yeah.
We are so not ready for gold.
It looked like it was being worked on, so I'm, that's something that, you know, I remember right next time and show you what I'm working on and.
Yeah, and if we actually find something and start working with the state of Connecticut. That'll really help sustainability, so, but yeah, absolutely. All right. So I think. Is there any other questions or?
Right, no, the reason, and and the the reason number two.
Yeah.
I I'm not sure I understand this one or that, that I'm not sure that it's in our party. But she's talking about, or they, it's not just one person.
Right.
She signed the letter, but uh, it says, how can we proactively keep the weapons? Contained, I'm imagining she's saying.
Yeah.
Keep them contained and not spreading.
I, well, I think, I think they're looking at the invasives not spreading through the wetlands.
Okay.
I can't believe it's fragrant.
Yeah, now she's saying about trees coming down. And not needing permits and driveways going in and other impervious. So I'm wondering if she means about the wetlands themselves expanding because now there's fewer things. You know, fewer. Your ser- services to absorb the water and so therefore more.
It's very, which the way it's recognized, she's combined several asks here.
Yes, yeah.
So why, why don't we do this, I'll write to her and tell her that we're tagging this up, we're looking at.
We just need some clarity.
But clarify reason number two, because.
Right.
Typically, wetlands don't expand. Um, and if they are, well.
Yeah, and and the alternative, if if what she's concerned with is the preservation of wetlands.
Right.
And that people are invading and intruding upon them, cutting down trees where conservation agents exist. That's simply an enforcement thing, so it's gotta go for them and then we check to see if somebody violated conservation.
Right, right. So, yeah, no, good point. I I will reach out to her and find out. But yeah, one of the things I was, I was reading about this uh, hip squad that was going out and basically uh, attacking. Various invasive plants in the town. And they were doing it on Saturdays and pick coffee in the morning, then go out for a couple hours, kill some invasives, like, you know, feel good about themselves. Given our knotweed problem in Clinton, that sounded like something I'd be interested in first getting off the ground, so. You know, I'll, I'll see if that's where it goes.
Have some kind of reporting on Japanese knotweed, and would you say?
But, you know.
Yeah.
We found, um, one way that it's spreading is that's when they're putting in film, like, yeah, killing or they're chatting a lot, or when they put the fill in. And it came in, um, filler.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, not with it.
It really is, it can spread.
Through the air.
People chip our ways, do wood chips with weeds and chip and wood, and then it ends up being in there, and then when they put the chip down, it spreads it further.
And if you try to pull it, even if you leave a piece like this small in the ground, it's only the rhizomes spread under the ground.
As a matter of fact, they don't pull it.
Right.
Cut it off.
Right.
And then a week later, you cut it off again, and a week later, you cut it off again, and you bake your tools and alcohol after you cut it. So, and, and you double bag the, uh, stuff and cut, so it's like real specific.
It is.
About how you get actually not, so.
But in the plan of, like, how people should dispose of.
The methods are public too specific, but the reference that we should be pursuing invasive management, and that's really important. Education, how regional requirements, I think that's, that's the plan should be in it.
Okay, cool. Anything else on, of course, I guess that was the only correspondence, so we'll move on. Uh, the joint land acquisition subcommittee meeting, given that we don't have our, uh, land trust folks here today, and we don't have Mark. Um, we wouldn't have forum, but it probably is worth taking a little time to sort of say where we are on the, the land acquisition.
Yeah, I, I can report a couple of good tips, number one, our chairman, Dick Webb. Magnanimously at the January, at the August eleventh meeting of the joint subcommittee meeting, he agreed to be the project man manager. To ensure, to oversee and ensure everything gets done on getting the grant, and land trust are gigantic responsibility. Um, and it requires a lot of skill, and he, he basically volunteered to do it, so. On behalf of the, um, our joint subcommittee, on behalf of the Clinton Rain Conservation Trust and the Conservation Commission. I think we should all thank him, uh, for this huge responsibility that he took over.
Well, it's, it's, you know, sort of that quasi-retirement having that space to fill. And, uh, this is something I feel pretty passionate about, so I want to get this over the line, so, yeah, and I think we've, uh. Thanks to Abby, thanks to Ken, I think we've, we've made the, the right steps, so, but basically where we are in the process right now. Is we're working with the state, D E E P, they've got a lot of requirements before you can actually get the money. Um, so one of the things that was a sticking point in this. And actually is, right now, the sticking point, just got stuck today, is you have to send to D E E P. A Word document with a very, very detailed boundary description. And I had basically gone back to the old D and said, put a Word document together of what was used for that. That was, I mean, the, if, if, you know. The spitting that came across the email at, at me was like, oh, this out, not nearly, uh. Add what, so, we've gone back to the surveyor. Who. Was not magnanimous and actually demanded an additional payment, not expenses, but given. Given how much we've given him, and the. Uh, the fact that he made a pretty significant error in the initial survey. You would think he would be interested in working with us on this, but. Um, anyway, he's putting that together hopefully in the next year or two, and that can get us. We can't even talk to the E E P until that is in their hands, I've got the survey in their hands, this was the second piece that goes.
Ken said today he'd sign it.
Yeah, so hopefully that's done.
Yep.
I'm gonna check with him tomorrow.
Yes.
So, did they give, assuming you signed it, did they give you a deadline and they will get it to you? Because we're actually, um, on borrowed time right now, we're, we're really short, we actually have the clips. In our, um, letter of intent with the settlers.
Yeah.
We were supposed to have this all on about spurs. I know Ken's been in touch with them, so I think we're in okay shape. But we need to get a purchase and sales and bring it done pretty shortly.
Yeah.
Um, and so state is asking for this boundary description, what they will do is they will turn around. And they will give us a document that basically says, hey, land trust, when you buy this piece of property, here are stipulations you've gotta. You've gotta do in terms of preserving the property, and, and until we get that, we can't do the purchase and sales, because that's been on the back of first.
Yeah, and in connection with the grant, um, the Clinton Land Conservation Trust was to, um, do a resolution. Authorizing our president of the trust, uh, to sign all paperwork for the grant. Uh, and, uh, the side agreements that, uh, the state gave us, and, uh, so on eight twenty six. We had our main conservation meeting, and at that time, the resolution was passed, so that's all go ahead.
Yeah.
So everything's moving very quickly at this point.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize it as quickly, I think, uh, in, I'd love it to be going a lot faster, I think once we get through this boundary, I think. Ken can rip off the next couple of things, we can actually have this purchase and sales done relatively quickly. And the D E work and the title insurance work, all that stuff, that, that can get done fairly quickly, it's, you know, it's a small.
The boundaries.
The boundaries, the details that come up and.
And also to recap also for our, our new members, so basically, the grant is, uh, been awarded from the state for, I believe, one hundred and six.
One hundred and three thousand.
One hundred and three thousand five hundred, um, the town has given us upwards to fifty.
Yeah.
The land purchase price is one fifty nine. So we're almost there, now, of course, there's other costs involved, which, uh, the Conservation Commission's budget has helped to pay for all the pre-purchase.
As well as other grants that, that.
Yeah. So, um, so really, there's gonna be a minimal cost for this property ultimately.
Let's see, saying something about the damage source.
Oh.
Excellent.
Which, yeah, let's, let's get this grant in the, all right, let's get this checked, before you start saying, the other thing is, um. Dana brought up that the Middlesex Community Foundation was having a, uh, grant meeting, and I attended that yesterday. Again, quasi-retirement, having some space to fill, um. And, you know, there is a, a real opportunity to get a five thousand or fifteen, fifteen thousand seems like a stretch, but a five thousand dollar grant. To do the trail building and the parking lot and all that stuff, um. I recommended that rather than going this grant cycle, which is due October second, we go to the one in February.
Yeah.
Because by then, we should have the property purchased, and we'll have all of this stuff ready, and we can start really mapping out what the trail building looks like. And come together with really good, so, costs of what that will be, and the signage and the parking lots, all that stuff. So, um, I think when there's further grants that we can get, I was actually telling Abby. I think the town of Clinton has got to get on, you know, get in there, you should, you know, there's money to be had.
Sure.
Other than the town for representing.
But the thing we did learn out of this, hope to conserve, uh, conservation, and, uh, the, uh, land conservation trust. Is, uh, that there is a tremendous amount of work to get these grants.
Yeah.
And a lot of expertise, thank God for Abby in the beginning, I think the knowledge and expertise to get us the baseline information to start running with. Um, and, um, so it's a combination of everything, and the town's support of this, uh. The assistance of all of these organizations coming together is what ultimately brought this to fruition.
Yeah, but, you know, the nice thing is, and this is really critical, for whatever reason, I'm gonna get hit by a bus or anything. We should continue. That learning that we've gotten through in terms of this process. We've got it institutionalized, and the, uh, the documents that are required to go after these grants. Need to be in a very easy to get to thing, because. When I wrote a second grant after Abby had helped me with the, the D E grant. The Connecticut Forester Grant, uh, it was a USDA, I mean, I just ripped from a lot of what she had got.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, shameless.
It, it's, it should be though, that the state cannot somehow streamline their requirements, because it's so. Uh, comprehensive in the end, a lot of work, uh, and a lot of knowledge.
As bad as they were, the USDA was much, really, almost there, yeah. So, I mean, I think once we've done it once, we've got to keep doing it so that we don't have this gap of. I mean, it was like five years from the prior one, and nobody really had that expertise to continue to have all the documents lined up and ready to go. And that's really, really important, so, just as a comment, in the future, we should have a. Little drive with all the, you know, we're gonna go after this, here are all the documents we need uploaded. Now let's start working on the writing, because otherwise, it's one of those things, you know, Abby did a fabulous job, and then I had to chase. Jack Green and Ken McDonald, and everybody else get all the documents that we got uploaded, and it was one of those things where. It just took a while, we could have had this thing just locked and loaded in a couple of weeks if we had our acts together.
Yeah.
So, just as a comment.
Do we just have a side agreement though, that, uh, even with all of that preparation for the next grant, uh, you'll agree not to cross the street if there's some.
Uh, okay, I don't think there's, uh, anything else we can say with the joint land acquisition committee, I mean, that's sort of where we are in this process. Um.
And we have another meeting next month.
And we got a meeting Monday that will go through and get the details going, um. So, I don't think we need to close the joint, because we didn't really open it.
Yeah.
Um. So. Really, it's just, I need somebody to adjourn the, uh, conservation commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Right, second, is there any discussion, anything we're missing? No, well then, all in favor? All opposed? And then, uh, uh, you are adjourned.